Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular business meeting of the Lublin Board of Education. I'd like to call us to order at 6:01 PM and ask our Treasurer, Mr. Hawley, for a roll call.
Hi, Dr. Lorenz.
Here.
Ms. Pettit? I think you're on mute, Michelle.
There, how's that one?
Yes, thank you. All right, Ms. Pettit?
Here.
Mrs. Washburn?
Here.
Thank you.
We do have two appointed board members here, and they will be sworn in and then added to our agenda as we move along. So again, I'd like to welcome you all, and I would ask that the first item of business is to adopt the agenda for this meeting this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? I see Mrs. Washburn's hand first and then Ms. Pettit's. So that's how we will go. There is a motion. The agenda is on Board Docs for anyone who is watching on the YouTube stream. The agenda is on Board Docs, and I believe there's an extra link there in case we have any problems with the meeting the way we did last time. So that if we need to move to another link, that is available for our audience. Any questions about the agenda from board members? All righty, Mr. Hawley, can we vote on that agenda?
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes. The agenda now says I should welcome guests, so I've already welcomed you. And I am welcoming all of our directors who are in the YouTube meeting. They may not always be showing up on the screen, but they will be when called upon or when they have reports. So I would ask you at this point if you would rise and listen to the Pledge of Allegiance as recited by Aileen Washburn and her daughter Hannah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We had a little bit of a blip there in the pledge, but I appreciate everybody being patient with us as we have technological blips. The first item after the Pledge of Allegiance is a very important item. We have the oath of office of two new board members this evening. So, Mr. Hawley, will you administer the oath of office to Mr. Doherty and Dr. Swetsonau?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lorenz. We're really excited to have both of you onboard with us. So if you could raise your right hand for me, please. Do you, Kevin Doherty and Eric Swetsonau, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of Lublin City School District, Hamilton County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and here enacted to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified? The answer is, I do.
I do.
I do.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're very glad to have you with us. We're glad to be a full board again.
Happy to be a part of it.
Now, we're going to make you work right away. The first item that comes up is to discuss board meetings, and so this is business of the board. And so we need to discuss several items on how to do business. You may have been listening at the last meeting. I know that Michelle and I lean remember that we talked about with the procedure that we've been doing with Zoom meetings and doing virtual meetings. We've had to put in place a policy which does not have the normal public participation at our meetings. So we have been accepting or reporting on emails and information that we've gotten between meetings. I have not received much this time. I did have someone who asked to be, to take part in public participation for this meeting, assuming that we would have an in-person meeting. And I informed that person that we would not, but that they could send me the subject if they wanted to. I have not heard. So I don't have any public participation for this meeting. But we do need to discuss how we're going to continue with meetings, whether we're going to continue virtually, whether we're going to move back to in-person meetings, how we're going to do hearing of the public, and possibly schedule a July meeting, depending on the need of the board as we begin to discuss the financial future of the district. So I'm opening the floor to discussion. We do have a meeting already next week. Our first work session in June is June 2nd. And then we have a meeting scheduled for June 23rd. And I'd be interested in hearing board member opinions, board member thoughts on what we do with our meetings going forward.
I think regardless of the format, whether it's online or in person, I guess I need to figure out a way to incorporate a hearing of the public and public participation. Not sure exactly what that looks like right now, but I know the technology there are options.
Other thoughts?
I'm going to ask David to chime in as well on that thought. If we continue in a virtual setting for the near future, is there a mechanism to incorporate live input from the public who wishes to be part of the hearing of the public?
To speak confidently that, Eric, I think that we would definitely need to do a little bit of research. I'm part of a group of technology coordinators from across the area. I know that, you know, school districts are all making these live meetings happen. So either through Zoom or through another mechanism, I'm sure we can find something. I think it would just be a means of making sure it's the most accessible and user-friendly function. Something we could definitely start to look into.
You know, I might add to that just a little bit and realize that we will have differences of levels of comfort about being in person with each other. And even if we do have a live meeting, preserving whatever option you're able to come up with for a remote member of the community to come in by video, I think especially at these times would be very helpful.
That's absolutely right.
I asked a colleague that had indicated, I speak with area superintendents twice a week, and I asked a colleague who said they were incorporating that. And I've heard a couple of different options. But one that I found intriguing is the signup for to, so normally when we're live, where people would come in, they would fill out and sign that up. That they did that. They signed up ahead of time and submitted that to the president, however. And then we could have that person call in to a separate line and have them join, you know, join their speech sort of in this way with the phone. So they're utilizing that. So it's not to have people in the meeting and then out of the meeting, you know, trying to join this link. That was a suggestion that was happening with, and that was not a district near us. It happened to be somebody out near the Cleveland area that was trying that.
I believe that I have heard of meetings. I don't know that City Council has continued this, but I believe that Lublin City Council had instituted a policy or a procedure where people could send in written statements via email that they came into City Council. They were either read during the meeting if they fit the timeframe, or they were read into or incorporated into the minutes. That doesn't allow for any questions on the part of our board members to get additional information live at the meeting, but it does allow for voices to be heard and then perhaps answers to come or information to come back in a good form after that.
Yeah, I would also, I just, look, I think we have 106 viewers on YouTube right now. And if any of you that are watching from the community had some ideas and suggestions on how to manage this kind of thing, I think we'd welcome it. I think what you're hearing is a strong interest and willingness to get these meetings as open as we can get them.
I think it's worthwhile to fill out the comments that I know at the meetings, live, which is relatively inexpensive or maybe have, I think, a free level as long as you can get questions from the public live during meetings and then short B&amp;Ds or something similar. So we have plenty of these, like, new people out there who, like Kevin said, we'd like to hear from. And I realize I'm breaking on the screen here, so, sorry.
And Lee, can you repeat the name of that school?
Yeah, it's like fly, but with an O at the end. And I looked right around with it a little bit the other day. But I know there are meetings, when they have large meetings or virtual meetings, that that is what they use there.
So Kathy, I think you started this even mentioning next Tuesday's meeting and whether we want to do that in person or virtual. Are we set up in, I guess this is the library room that we hold meetings in? Are we set up in there for social distancing or do we have a limit on how many people we could have in the room?
So one of the things that we talked about in preparation to support your discussion here is because we have an unknown number of attendees at any time, it is, I believe we could create social distancing for a large number of people, but then you would sacrifice the ability to hear the work. So, you know, an option would be to, a hybrid option would be that we, as a board, and administrative team could be live and then just livestream that meeting. So that, but it would not, that would not solve the hearing of the public portion of it. With an unknown number of attendees, it just, it becomes challenging to know how could, again, I think we could be prepared to distance a fairly large number of people. We could even move into a different venue to distance people, but will sacrifice the ability to actually hear the work.
Amy, is it fair or even possible then to ask if people would like to attend that meeting as part of the public, that a reservation in advance would be required so that we know how we're going to set up?
Amy, could I offer thoughts on that?
Sure.
My thoughts on reservations are a little problematic for a public meeting if they are open to the public. And then if we take reservations and we have a member of the public who comes and we've met our limit of people and then we have to turn someone away, I'm not sure that's following the letter or the spirit of the law to allow public participation or hearing of the public if someone gets turned away because they didn't know they needed to do a reservation.
And that's my concern is if you're open, you're open. We don't want to have a capacity where we say, I'm you.
Well, as much as I agree with that, we're unfortunately saddled with the fact that we're required to do some degree of social distancing. So we can't necessarily have meetings like we've had in the past in the near future.
How would the auditorium at the high school work? Wouldn't that give us, we could do every other row with different things. We could be up on a stage with plenty of feet between us all. And I think would the auditorium give us the space that we need so that if we got 150 people, we could accommodate them?
You gonna end that with question mark? I mean, we can certainly look at that. And then I, the sound system there, there's a limited number of people who can operate the sound system at the high school, so it becomes just a staffing.
Sam does know how, just an FYI.
Could I make a suggestion? And I'm not trying to stop discussion at all. Obviously, we're talking about next Tuesday for our work session. And our work session does not include hearing of the public. I am adding an extra glitch into the, and it's fine, however we work this out. Next Tuesday, I will be out of town. I have a family medical situation that I need to go take care of. And so if there were to be an in-person meeting next Tuesday, I would not be able to attend the meeting from a distance. I could listen in via phone, but I could not participate. If the board were to, even if they met in person next Tuesday, have a Zoom meeting where they are all on a Zoom meeting, even meeting in person, then I could join that meeting via Zoom and we could all be together. And that meeting could be streamed fairly easily. The other question about streaming an in-person meeting, no matter where we have it, if we have it in the auditorium, if we have it in the media center, we need someone to film it and someone to stream it. And we need to be careful of the setup that we do so that it's getting out there as well as these Zoom meetings happen to be getting out there. I mean, we did this sort of out of necessity, but I think we've hit on something that does allow quite a few people to participate in the meeting that didn't necessarily come to in-person meetings before. So that's a good thing about having this Zoom meeting. Kevin, I see your hand raised. Yes.
Yeah, I'm just going to suggest that, you know, Tuesday's going to be here in the blink of an eye. And I'm going to suggest from a practicality perspective, we do another Zoom meeting like this. And in the meantime, get some research done on what both technology and physical space options we have available to us so we are a little bit better thought out to change the format of the meetings after Tuesday.
That sounds right.
That sounds good.
Okay.
And that way we can hear from people and think through all the different options and check out the technology piece.
And one other thing that I would ask board members to consider as you're thinking about for next week and for the end of June, possibly we are in a better situation to keep our June business meeting via Zoom as well, thinking of a different way to handle hearing of the public within a Zoom meeting and make sure that whatever setup we have for in-person can start either in July if we have a meeting or in August, when we'll have a little better idea of how we're going to go back to school, how we're going to be using the buildings, that kind of thing as well. I'm not saying that the June 23rd meeting needs to be a Zoom meeting. I'm just saying that may be something that the board wants to think about as well.
Well, you know, one of the positives in this is that we may find a way to open up meetings to broader public permanently through, you know, what we're able to learn through the adoption of this technology.
Good point. Anything else on how we're going to do meetings? The question of scheduling a meeting for July came up because I believe that, if not the main topic of discussion that would be on the agenda next week, next Tuesday, at least a very important topic, will be the financial situation of the district and consideration for future financial needs of the district. And so depending on how the board discussion goes and what a board decision might be, there is a possibility of needing a July meeting if there is consideration particularly of a ballot issue in the future. I believe there's a date in July that we would need to meet. Would it be possible for board members to select a July? Mr. Hawley, would we need a July meeting and an early August meeting or two July meetings if we were to propose a let be?
Yeah, so we could also do an early August meeting. It just might be a good idea just to make sure that we have at least two dates in July just to cover all options.
Are board members comfortable with looking at their calendar and being prepared next Tuesday to set those dates?
Yes.
Rather than spending a lot of time this evening looking at calendars and haggling about who's going to be where? If we could put that as the first item on the agenda of next Tuesday is to think about dates for future meetings?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else that you'd like to talk about about board meetings? Mr. Hawley, Dr. Kraus, did we cover what we needed to as far as the administrative needs would be for meetings?
Yeah, from my same point, yes.
Okay.
And to summarize, you'd like us to look at potential options to sort of business as usual in a pandemic, trying to have an in-person meeting with people there and the things in between. And you're also going to, can you share with me if you get individual suggestions from community members? Can you share that with Kevin and I so that we can incorporate that into our? And we can try to have some suggestions and some ideas by the second. I agree with Mr. Doherty. I can't imagine trying to pull that off by Tuesday, but I think by Tuesday we can at least say, you know, here are the barriers to some of that and here are some options that we could do fairly easily. I can't promise that we'll have that all signed up by Tuesday, but it seems reasonable.
I think I just have one thing to add, and I apologize. If I remember correctly, the guidelines from the State of Ohio are still not to have gatherings of more than 10 people. I don't know how that will affect us.
That is true. But for business operations, as long as you can socially distance, if we don't think of ourselves as a school and we think of this as a business meeting, there are opportunities to do that within, you know, we can defer to that guidance. I mean additionally, as you bring up, our buildings are technically closed until June 30th. But as you may or may not know, athletics are starting. If you are not paying attention, you only know that if you're not paying attention. Athletics are starting. So our facilities are being used in a mat too. So, you know, there's, the state is trying to chunk this out and, you know, and do things that make sense, but sometimes they conflict on each other. I do know that the city, excuse me, City Council is also trying to figure out perhaps to have their June meetings live and in person and with socially-distanced opportunities for guests to be at those meetings. They've not solved that problem yet, but they are also, they're in the same space we are exploring now.
Great.
Okay, thank you. We have a little bit more board work to do, and that is to talk about board committee assignments. And those committee assignments are listed under Board Docs, under 2.2. We have a Facilities Committee. We have a Finance Committee. We have a Policy Committee and a Student Experience Committee. And I believe at the current time, what you see there is the current board member assignments for those committees. So Ms. Pettit is Facilities. Ms. Pettit is Finance. I am on Policy Committee. And Mrs. Washburn is on the Student Experience Committee. That's not to say that they have to stay that way. That's just who is currently on there. The other issue is we don't necessarily have to have two board members on each committee. We have typically had that. That's a good idea. If there's a committee meeting and one board member can't make it, there is always a board member who can be there. But it doesn't have to be that way. I always joke that nobody's terribly excited about policy. And I think in the way that we are operating for the rest of this year, we have some very important issues before the district, and that is operating in a pandemic or coming out of a pandemic operation. That is financial operation. There are some things that are pretty important. And policy may get relegated to working on the policy that simply has to be taken care of based on the things that we're doing. So it may not be as big a job as it usually is. We have typically tried to be a little proactive and go through policies and say, we need to look at these. Let's look at this group, see what needs work on. So if there isn't anybody clamoring to be on policy, I am okay to stay on policy by myself for the rest of this year. We would reorganize again in January. So if you choose a committee and you're not happy with it, we can do a sort of a musical chairs when we get to January as well. But if I could ask Kevin and Eric to perhaps give us an idea what committees they would like to participate in, and then we can see if we can get everybody organized into committee assignments.
Sure.
Kathy, we also have, I'm sorry. A quick word clarification about the committees. The committees are administrative committees in order to bring board members along on specific items within, around these ideas. So in order to sort of expedite or time, it's an opportunity for two board members to explore a little more deeply on the administrative side on these topics. I mean, moving forward, you know, different committees could exist. These were, these are just committees that help us, you know, share just more information than might, you know, be appropriate or from a time perspective with the whole board on all those. So the areas that you have a greater interest in in understanding sort of in the weeds and the details around some of those things are opportunities for you to spend time on the administrative time, on the administrative side, for you to understand those a little bit differently or better, and then help bring the rest of the board members along with more additional knowledge. So that's sort of the purpose of them, just to frame some of that. And I'm sorry, I need to head off.
Oh, that's okay. I didn't raise my hand first. Going to say, we also have the committee, the Oath Committee that Dr. Lorenz is on. And then we need to talk about if we want to change or if we want two people for the Community Committee.
The Planning Commission?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right. And we certainly can have that discussion as well. The Planning Commission bylaws as they stand, which I don't believe they've been adopted by the Planning Commission yet. The way they currently stand, it says there's a, the board president and a board member would participate, not as a voting member in that commission. But certainly we can talk about that as well. That's true. Okay, now Kevin and Eric.
Eric, did you want to go first?
I don't have any strong preferences, Kevin. You have one or the other that you have a preference for. I'm happy to serve in any of the others. And quite honestly, I could learn about all of these things. So I can't attend to every single committee meeting, but it would be valuable for me to be on, I hope.
My blessing.
I have Eric's hand down on all the committees.
The schedule that was provided for you is simply the schedule that the board last year adopted for this year, and I asked Julie to roll that forward. We can change and alter when those committee meetings meet. Don't let the times and the dates deter you from your area of interest. There's simply, that's what was there before. And that's to get us started. But don't let time or dates deter your interests.
Dr. Lorenz or Kathy, if that's okay. Do you prefer, do you prefer right now to try to do more than one board member on each committee?
If that is, if board members are able, I think that it is good to have two board members on each committee if they are able. And that's why I was simply volunteering that policy might be one that stays single because there are at least three holes. So that means that Kevin and Eric, you would need to each, one of you would need to do two. So I didn't want to impose on new board members that you have to do two committees. But I think it is good if we have two members on each committee.
Well, if we continue, if we can continue with two on the Planning Commission, Well, if we continue, if we can continue with two on the planning commission, I would be happy to continue with. I mean, I'm Kevin, if you feel comfortable doing two of these other committees, and I'll pick up the other one.
Yeah, I don't know, Michelle, were you trying to get recognized?
Yes, I just wanted to say I am on the finance committee, which I am more than happy to, to continue serving. But if you two are interested in it, please don't be afraid to speak up and say you want to be on that, because it would be a great opportunity for you to learn about school financing.
Yeah, so the way I thought about this is where I think I could add the most amount of value. And coming from where I come from, I have had an interest from the very beginning in, in finance. If there was a need to have some additional input on facilities, I'm happy to lend a hand there too. In a lot of background in both of those areas, so. And those are probably the two that I'd add the most to.
I will say that very often, there's an attempt to have the finance committee and the facilities committee meet relatively close together so that they don't, you don't have to come to two separate meeting times if you're on both of those committees. Eric, did I hear you say that you were interested in serving on the, as a representative to the planning commission?
Well, I had participated. I'm sorry, go ahead, you finish.
And then another committee, is that what you had said?
Exactly, yeah, so I participated with Eileen in the first planning commission meeting, and it sounds like that will take some amount of time. I am more than happy to fill any of these roles. Michelle, if it's okay with you, one of my interests is finance as well, and I think I can serve well at that, but I certainly don't want you to feel like I would want to bump you out of it.
I, I got on the facility, or on the financial by default. It just, it was, so, yeah, I somehow got on by default, I could make the meeting times, it just, it just was what it was. So it will not hurt my feelings if the two of you would like to do that, I think it'd be a great, great opportunity for you.
That sounds good, so then if I read that correctly, we'll have Michelle and Kevin doing the facilities committee, Kevin and I doing the finance committee, Kathy staying with the policy committee, Eileen staying with student experience. And then Eileen and I, or if anybody else wants to participate, can work with the planning commission. I feel like there's one that we're missing that wasn't, wasn't on that list.
We talked, Eileen mentioned Great Oaks. The Great Oaks representative from the board is actually appointed, the way the legislature works now, is appointed for a three-year term, and so that is taken care of at the moment. Although there's nothing to say that we couldn't appoint someone else to that. We can discuss that at a future time, we don't have to do that this evening if, if someone else wants to be the Great Oaks representative. The other thing I would suggest at this point is that I would ask either Michelle or Eileen if they wish to serve on either policy or student experience, so that we have perhaps two on student experience, and again, two on policy if you'd like. Or I can just read all those policies and proofread them and bring them to you and say, here they are. So Michelle, perhaps we'll ask you what you would like to do, since you've, you've bumped yourself off of finance.
Well, I didn't notice one of them. I've been on student experience and I really like it, but I will not be able to make that four to five time. And I know Eileen needs to make the four to five time. So Catherine, I'm not very good at proofreading, but I would love the opportunity to learn more about policy, I cannot believe I just said that.
I can't either, I wrote your name down, so you're.
I'm in.
Eileen, are you okay on student experience for right now? And if I can, I will join you on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so then what I have written down is Michelle and Kevin, facilities, Kevin and Eric, finance, Michelle and Kathy, policy, and Eileen and maybe Kathy, or Eileen and a floating member to, a member to be named later, a draft choice to be named later. And then at another point, we will confirm the planning commission members once the planning commission works on its bylaws. And we'll confirm who's going to, you know, be present at those planning commission meetings. And the Great Oaks, we can discuss at a later time. Does that sound all right?
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right.
I do want to point out, I really appreciate the fighting over the finance committee. That's the most I've seen, typically, it was usually Mr. Jarvis and then.
Crickets.
Yes.
Me by default.
We're here to help, thanks.
Yeah, you guys just made Kevin stay.
I'm just so excited, we keep telling Kevin, and he's so excited, and we are very happy about that.
Okay, is that okay for board meetings, committee meetings? And as Amy said, all of those committee meetings are negotiable for when they occur to get them into people's schedules and when they are able to attend them. All right, then we will move on, there are a couple of board resolutions. The first board resolution is to elect a vice president of the Board of Education for the remainder of 2020. And so I will open the floor for nominations for vice president of the board.
Kathy, tonight?
You see?
Yes.
Thank you. I've read this, and I just want to make sure that I understand and hear it from somebody who knows, somebody maybe on the policy committee who knows it. What exactly is the role of the vice president of the Board of Education?
Right, very simply, to do it really fast, both the president and the vice president of the board are simply individual members of the board. Each board member has a voice, each board member has one vote. The main job of the president and then of the vice president in the absence of the president is to ensure that the meetings run smoothly, so they are a meeting facilitator. At, at times, the board, the, the president is asked to be the voice of the board if there is a statement that is made to the public. Very often then, the media contacts the board vice president, and if they are unable to be in contact with the president, they contact the vice president. So those are the two main things for the president and the vice president. In recent past, what we have done, the charge for the president is to set the agenda for the meetings. And so the board president meets with those administrators that are able to tell the board what things need to be on a meeting. And so then we work out the agenda that way. In recent years, both the board president and the vice president have attended those meetings to make sure that we have all the voices that we need to be heard to get on the agenda, what the board needs to deal with. So those, I would say, are the main things, to run the meeting, to serve as a voice for the board if a statement needs to be made to the general public or to the media, and to help set the agenda for future meetings. Does that help? Kevin, I saw your hand.
Yeah, just Kathy, Kathy, just a quick clarification, in setting the agenda, board members, I assume, have the ability to say there's a topic we'd like to add to it, right?
Absolutely, and in fact, we occasionally have input from the public who is able to contact either the board or the administration and say, here is an item that we would like to hear the board discuss, and we are asking that it be added to the agenda. But absolutely, board members can suggest items at any time.
And I'm assuming that everybody knows this, but again, we're up to about 130 people witnessing this meeting, but there are email addresses on the Loveland School website for all of us, I think.
Yes, and I believe there is a link there still, now, Eric and Kevin, have you gotten your Loveland School email addresses yet?
Yes.
So I believe there's a link there that we can all be emailed at once, or we can all be emailed individually as well.
Very good.
I'll double check and make sure that the group email is updated and accurate. That doesn't happen by default, so I'll check the technology to make sure that if you're emailing all five board members, you are actually getting the file viewed.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, so once again, and I would entertain a motion to, I would entertain a nomination for vice president.
I would like to nominate Michelle Pettit.
I hear Mrs. Washburn nominating Michelle Pettit. And we don't need a second for a nomination. Ms. Pettit, would you accept that nomination?
I would.
Are there any other nominations?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this challenging, because I can say very clearly, and I, I think Kevin may feel the same way that I do, I am not prepared for that role. And I would nominate Eileen, who I think would do a wonderful job.
Okay, there's also a nomination for Mrs. Washburn, Eileen, would you accept that nomination?
Yes, what I'm hearing Eric say is that we should not nominate him.
Is there a little bit of a delay there, sorry?
That is what you were hearing.
All right, any other nominations? All right, and then I would entertain a motion to close nominations.
Submit.
And I see Eric, I almost tried to write on my iPad there that who seconded, or who made that nomination? I'm in bad shape this evening. Okay, so we do have, we need a roll call vote to close nominations, Mr. Hawley.
Mr. Doherty? Yes. Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Dr. Schweitzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Motion carried, nominations are closed. The way we have handled this in the past, when there are two nominees, is to go through a roll call vote with the board member stating the name of the nominee that they are voting for. Is that an acceptable way to do it?
Kathy? Kathy, I don't know if this is out of sequence now or not, but being very new here and not knowing everybody very well, if there's a chance to hear Michelle and Eileen speak for a couple of sentences about why then?
Absolutely, that's not out of order at all. I'll go in order of nomination and in order of alphabet. Michelle, would you like to speak?
Sure, I would like to be the vice president. I feel like I still have a lot to contribute over the things that we've learned the last few months. I have also been on the board for six years, I do bring some experience. And I would just like to be able to bridge that gap between the board and the community and, and get things to where they need to be so that we can educate students.
Thank you, Eileen.
All right, I feel that I would do a good job as vice president because I just lost all of my words, sorry. You have one of those moments?
Sorry to do this to you.
With you guys putting us on the spot.
Sorry, no, that's.
I feel like we are obviously in a difficult position right now as a board, and we really want to work hard to repair our relationship with the community and be able to move forward to do what's in the best interest of the community, the teachers, the students, the faculty, everybody involved. And I haven't really had much of a voice up until this point, and I think as vice president, it would give me the opportunity to step up and be able to be that voice, and similar to Michelle and everybody else sitting here, help bridge that gap that exists currently.
And I think I, I think I.
Everyone, my screen is frozen.
No, you're good. I think I have one more thing to say before we vote. The reason that I nominated Eileen after I leaned nominated Michelle was to express the fact that I, as a new member, feel both of you would be excellent in that job. And no matter who takes the job, you're going to both do a great, great service for our community and for me over the course of the next year or so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Is it acceptable to the board to simply state your vote, the name of the person you are voting for? The only other choice, I think, would be to have a vote for each person separately, and you would say yes or no, the result would come out the same, I assume, but I just want to make sure the board is comfortable stating the name of the person that they are voting for as vice president?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, Mr. Hawley, can we vote on that nomination then? We're, oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote, no.
No, there's, there's two motions, I think we're fine.
The second motion, so the motion is to appoint, and you would name the person as vice president of the board, sorry.
All right, Dr. Lorenz?
I get to go first, right? I agree with Eric that both of these women have shown themselves to be very good board members, and it's a very hard thing, you all will. I don't know. I, I will vote for Ms. Pettit.
All right, Ms. Pettit?
I will vote for myself, Michelle Pettit.
Uh, Dr. Schweitzer?
I would be happy to vote for Ms. Pettit.
Mrs. Washburn?
I will, my mom could be mad at me because she told me once in fifth grade, when I voted for my friend and not myself, that you should always vote for yourself, but I'm gonna vote for Ms. Pettit.
Hey, Mr. Doherty? Am I in the enviable position of having to vote out?
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna vote for Eileen, just to recognize her selflessness. Thank you.
Okay, then, the motion carries with Ms. Pettit being vice president for the rest of 2020, congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, Michelle.
And thank you all for your comments, I, I do know that we all have a big job for the rest of this year. One of the first things that this board will be discussing is communication and how we all begin to bridge this gap, whether it's as president of the board, vice president of the board, committee members, individual community members. We have a lot of work to do, and that's one of the top things on our agenda is to make sure we get that communication where we want it to be, so, thank you all. I think that we have finished the board work, and we did it in less than an hour, so that is all the board things we have to do.
And Amy, you have to appoint yourself later.
Oh, you're correct, I'm sorry, I missed one. I was looking at two different places for the agenda, thank you very much. The last board resolution is to appoint members to the planning commission. And so I will make the motion to appoint members, and then if there is a second? Do I see a second? I see Mrs. Washburn seconding that motion. I would like to read those members who are on that motion. We did invite these members, the planning commission members have all received an invitation. I believe they received both a, an email invitation, and I believe that Mrs. Washburn called every one of them to confirm, so they all know that they are on the planning commission. They have actually been together in a Zoom meeting that I believe Mrs. Washburn and Dr. Schweitzer now attended. So they have been made aware of the things that the commission needs to do. This is the official appointment of these members, and their names are Janelle Otten, Daniel Coletto, Bradley Combs, Susan Craig, Kelly Dear, Bradley Goldie, Tara Hamilton, Matthew Hammer, Jeff Huck, Leah Jewell, Jill Jones, Kevin Hemnoff, Al Kressler, I can't say Alvin, Craig Lewis, Nathan Libby, Lynn Mangan, Kirk McCracken, Lisa Moorhead, Lynn Ori, Lisa Saletta, Michael Shaversky, Alexander Tapala, Lindsay Willman, Warren Winning, and Natasha Young. And they were all invited to listen in on the meeting this evening for their recognition. for their recognition as becoming initial Members of the Planning Commission, and they will begin their work June 3rd, is that correct?
Can I give a quick summary of that?
Yes.
All right, and then Eric and Eileen can chime in if I miss anything, is that all right?
Great.
Because they weren't official, an official commission, and because they're chartering this commission, I invited them to a, a pre-organizational organizational meeting, so that it's hard to just create yourselves out of nothing. So we had a meeting last week where everyone came, got a chance to say why they wanted to be on the Commission, and just sort of see people's faces. And they, what they will do is, at their meeting on June 3rd, they will elect a President. Or right away in the agenda, and then I will hand off that agenda to that President to run those meetings. So I ran this organizational meeting, it's not, it's not an administrative meeting, that these people, this group will exist on their own, but in order to charter that up, we needed to get that started. One of the tasks that that Commission will have to tackle on that first meeting is the Constitution and bylaws that Dr. Lorenz just mentioned, and it, it sounds like we will want to change that language in the bylaw that says two Members appointed by the Board, or the two, without putting a clarification of a President or a Vice President, that it would just be two Members of the Board as appointed by the Board, if that's okay with the Board. The other thing that they will do is the terms of being on the Commission are three-year terms, and much like the Board, in order to stagger those, so that you're not looking at an entire new Commission or a group at any time, those are in three-year terms. So I did ask each Member of the Commission to send, just to fill out a quick survey of what's, what's the subcommittee they wish to serve on as their priority, and what, what term are they willing to take, a one-year, two-year, or three-year, so that initially we can, we can build in that stagger. The bylaws do say that people can serve multiple terms, so a one-year, a one-year term does not, does not mean that a one, that that person would not come back. It just means that it puts us in that stagger. And then I will provide that feedback or that input from those, from the Commission Members to the President, and the Commission can determine how to proceed with that. So I have tried to organize the information so that the Commission can create themselves next Wednesday. Those, those meetings will need to be public, so they will be live streamed. Once we figure out how we're gonna do Board meetings, we'll have to also figure out how to do Planning Commission meetings, but those, because they will be a Commission of the Board, they will be subject to the same rules and regulations about having meetings in public. So the Commission will have to work through that a little bit, too. Everyone was excited to be a part of it, you know, sort of eyes wide open, making sure everyone understood what they were signing up for, and they had some great discussion. So the bylaws that will be presented to the Commission will have a show edits. Things that came up, either in the meeting or in feedback after the meeting to me, will be presented back to the Commission as potential edits that the Commission can adopt. Eric and Eileen, do you have anything else to add to that meeting? Or that summary?
No, I thought it was a very positive meeting. I look forward to the work that the Committee, the Commission is going to do. When you were talking about how it would still kind of be governed by the laws of, similar to the Board meeting, I thought that a lot of great discussion was already occurring about how to incorporate public voice and opinion into that, so they can then bring that to us, and we can try to act on their suggestions. So I love that that was probably the biggest focus, I would say, that night, in addition to getting to know people. So that's just really, I think, positive.
I agree.
Well, and, and I can easily add, there is a lot of positive energy amongst us people, and, you know, some of my main goals right now are transparency and communication. And I think that having that many people focused on those same goals will be really helpful for all of us in order to make sure that we don't miss any voices in the community, and that we're, we're not talking to the wrong group of people, but to the right group of people.
Kevin?
Just in the interest of transparency, can we understand how the Members were identified and selected?
Absolutely. What happened was, the Board determined back in December, I believe, to set up this Commission, we'd been talking about it prior to that, but it was December when we sent out, I believe, a call, and we received applications from community Members, and we did a, a blind review of those applications. They came into the administrative office, names were removed, identifying features were removed, and each Board Member evaluated each application. We had a rubric that we followed, looking for community influence, looking for a variety of experience and expertise that these Members could bring to the Commission. And so the five Board Members each came up with a score according to the rubric for the applications, and then after we had to put them all in order, that's when we learned the names of who these folks would be. And we asked Mrs. Washburn to contact the first, now my numbers are gonna be off. We took applications from staff as well as community Members, and we had determined we would have seven staff Members, and I think we were originally going to have 16 community Members, and we determined, based on the number of applicants we got and the scores of them that we took, the top 18. So Mrs. Washburn called all those folks and asked them if they were in fact still interested, and they all accepted our invitation, so that's how we came up with this Planning Commission.
So we started with 23 applicants, and did I understand that right? We ended up with 18 Commissioned.
No, we had more than, did we have 32?
38.
38, I couldn't remember the number, so the top 18 out of 38.
So about half.
Yes. Yes. Okay, and did I hear in the discussion, I only had one question, the, the Commission has not yet been asked or talked about the different Committees or the different parts of the Commission that they would take part in, in other words, they are just being brought into the Commission as a whole, but it was a part of the plan that there would be smaller working groups for particular questions and issues for the district.
I did ask each of the Commission Members to send me, just through a simple Google form, what their one, two, three, what their preferences were, with the ability to say, like, I'm putting a four on two of these, I'm just really not interested in that, or, you know, I did, you know, there was some flexibility in that, and to also give their input on their willingness to be a one-year, two-year, or three-year Person. So that is all coming in to me, I have looked today to see how many that we have, but that way the President, the Commission will have that data already for that evening, so that they can work through how to determine that happens. Yeah, so it seems, I hope it seems reasonable to be able to provide that ahead of time to the President, so that the President could preside over those decisions, and the Commission could make up the rest.
I, I agree, I think if I recall correctly, we had a lot of people who were interested in finance, and fewer in some of the others, just as our new Board Man Members are interested in finance, a lot of the community is, and, and rightfully so, it is a very important issue at the moment, but if you're going to have a small working group, you can't have the whole Commission work on one thing, you want to get some, some different kinds of feedback, so. I would be looking forward to them organizing that.
I'll glance at the feedback, I do know that have everybody's, it looks fairly, fairly well balanced. I think that will, I think it'll, it'll shake out all right, and the Commission will be able to manage that without too much trouble.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?